Evening. I'd like to call to order the July 23, 2018 Hingham School Committee Meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Everyone, all of the school committee members are here tonight except for Kay Prashma, who is away this week, and we were aware that she was not going to be here tonight. So, our first order of business is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 21, 2018.
Thank you, Carlos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 4, 2018.
Second?
One second.
Thank you, Carlos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, thank you. The minutes are approved. Item number three on the agenda, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome. As agenda items are discussed, I can read the rest if anyone is here for comments or questions, but if not, we can move on to the next. No? Okay, great, thank you. Then item four, superintendent's report.
Item five.
Sorry? Your superintendent's report.
We're under four on ours. This one's under four. And then this was at 7:30. I think that's the draft. She changed. That's okay.
All right. So, you have in your packet an email that comes from the commander, I believe is his title, of the Wind and Ponds Veterans Association. I understand that's a group of more than 100 residents at Wind and Ponds, a very active association. And so, this is really a letter telling us about one of the honor flights that you probably read about in the local press that takes veterans from World War II and the Korean War on a trip to Washington, DC. And I would call to your attention in it, the paragraph that talks about a mail call activity that occurs when they're taking the bus ride back to the airport to come home. And they are presented with packets of letters that come from veterans' family and from students. And so, a number of our elementary students have participated in writing those letters to be part of the packets. And we know that the East School students were participants and that Fosse School students have been participants in the past. And not sure about the other two schools. I wasn't able to reach those principals today. But it's a nice honor, and I think it reflects that we do so many different activities with the veterans in this town, and this is one at the elementary level. So, that's just their FYI for you. Okay, the May and June facilities. No, this is not.
Projections.
What's happened here is that our new secretary has printed out the wrong agenda as the annotated.
It's this one. That's the right one.
So, anyway, we have enrollments, and I put in, at your place tonight, the most up-to-date enrollment projection for the coming year. So, it says 7:23 at the top. The one in your packet was an earlier one. And so, you can see the projected numbers of students. We think these projections are pretty accurate because we actually keep track from June of any move-ins and move-outs and keep them updated. So, these are really pretty much on target in terms of what we will see on the first day of school. On the reverse side, I would call your attention to the fact that we ended school year with the June actual enrollment being 1902. And this projected in July of 2018 is 1882, and that's down 20 students. And that minus 20 is because we had a larger class of 5th graders moving to the middle school than kindergarteners entering. At this point, we have 277 kindergarten students, the majority of them all being full-day students. Our, the revenue from the students who paid for the full-day program was a little bit over our target in the budget, the budget offset. So, that's good news. At this point, we're looking at 14 sections, which would be down one section from last year. And we are watching very carefully the kindergarten at East School, which in hours at 64 and three sections. We'd originally thought that would be four sections. It may move to that by the 1st of August, which is when we stop putting together the real assignments and the packets at the elementary level. Last year, we had 289 students at the end of the year in kindergarten. And if you then look at the 306 1st graders that we're projecting, that's up 17 students. And that's about what we thought we would have between last year's kindergarten and this 1st grade. So, continuing the pattern of not having a pattern of what's happening at kindergarten. We're working on the report that we said we would have by August 1, of looking at the kindergarteners by age. I have information from each of the four schools, and so, have a draft of that report, and we will have that available by the 1st, as we said that we would. One of the most frustrating things that we found, and this has been true for the last perhaps four years, is the difficulty in getting parents to respond. So, we're pretty comfortable with the packets that went out and came back, and that's accurate. But based upon the census, we, of students that filled out a town census in January, we had, as of this morning, more than 20 students that we simply could not contact. So, that means that they didn't show up at the school. They didn't pick up a packet. But we have an interest in knowing who they are and where they are. It makes a huge difference because those students could have moved away. And indeed, we've tried to get answers on these folks. They could have moved away, and in fact, some have. They could be planning to hold their child out, and we don't know that. We can't make that assumption and wouldn't know that till next year. They could be going to another private kindergarten such as Derby or St. Paul's. But the secretaries have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to locate these folks. And in fact, we're now at the point of making site visits to houses because we simply can't get anyone to respond. So, it's a frustration, and it makes it more time-consuming, more challenging. So, we're comfortable with the number who are coming. That's not the issue. The issue is knowing where the ones who are on the census are. And if they're, they certainly have every right to be in a private kindergarten, but we'd like to know that because in the absence of knowing, we have to assume that at least some of them are planning to enroll next year. And we want to know that now in order to make our report as accurate as it can be. So, that's our frustration.
The class sizes look great.
Mm-hmm.
What does the M mean next to, is that mail?
Oh, that was when we were trying to figure out where we would put new incoming MEPCO students.
Oh, MEPCO.
And so, you'll see that in the, at the elementary grades and.
Okay.
So, we've added MEPCO students.
Yeah, that's great. I was just trying to figure out the.
And speaking of MEPCO, we have, I don't know if we want to announce the name yet, but we have identified a MEPCO candidate for the new director role. We spent two days in interviewing, and then we had three finalists come in last week and identified the candidate that were going to move forward. And so, as soon as that's finalized with salary and such, we'll let you know about that. So, we're feeling good about that. With respect to hiring, we expect that we're going to be at least 30 teachers and the two administrators we have and the MEPCO coordinator, which is many more than I anticipated when school ended. In fact, we've had a fair number of resignations that we didn't anticipate. And we've had some additional people taking a one-year leave of absence, mainly maternity leaves. So, that, it's 30 now. I've met with more than 20 of them. And there are five more people that have been identified that are waiting to fall for an appointment. And then, that leaves us with two or three, but we had one as recent as last week. Some of our faculty, I think there are three, are moving to administrative roles in other communities, so that's a good thing for them. And we had anticipated that this was likely to happen, but didn't know exactly when that might be. So, we're moving forward with that. But it is a bigger task this year to fill all of those openings that we didn't really anticipate. I think that's it for the enrollment in the second. Now, I can tell you a little bit about secondary enrollment is very hard to predict at this time of year because people can come in and say they're moving here and even return a packet. But we really can't count them as firm enrollments until the counselors have been in and these folks have actually scheduled a program. Because we don't even know at the high school level what grade these students may be in until we have the counselors go through their transcripts and so on. But right now, it looks like we're expecting at the high school, 1266. We ended the year with 1250, so a little bit of a bump up at the high school. But it's a very, very soft number. And then, at the middle school, it looks as if we're expecting 1022. We ended the year with 1070, so that's down a bit. And that reflects the slightly smaller, not a lot smaller, but slightly smaller classes that are moving in each of the last few years from the elementary to the middle school. I would take these numbers on the elementary, on the chart, the K-5 chart, to the bank. I can't say the same for middle and high school. That's just the way it is with secondary enrollments. Secondary, families don't always let us know if they are moving or if the child is withdrawing to go to a public, a private school. We really don't know that until the first day of school actually comes. So, stay tuned for more information, more information on that. Hiring, I guess that's it. The transition room information for the end of the year is in your packet for the high school and the middle school. And you can review that information. It doesn't vary a lot from month to month. But it's nice to see the end-of-the-year summary. And we anticipate both of those individuals, the supervisors of those rooms, to be back next fall.
Todd, I had a question on the middle school report. So, we had talked previously with other updates about kids attending the transition room when they were not attending PE. And to me, it seemed like there was a real pickup in the number of kids in May and June that were using the transition room just because they couldn't participate in phys ed. Now that we've had a full year of the transition room and a year and a half, I would like to get some real better data on this in the middle school. Because it's, well, for me, I mean, I'm focused on what's best for the child. But I really feel that with phys ed, even if you just can't participate in phys ed, you should be in the phys ed and keeping score, paying attention to rules, as opposed to being exempt and sitting in on another room. And I also then feel like, is this the best use of our resources if there are so few of non-PE-exempt kids in that room? And that's my question. I don't know the answer to that, but the PE thing stood out to me for the end of the year.
Okay, well, the community outreach committee, I thought, did a fairly thorough job. Now, unfortunately, Kay's not here tonight, and Aileen is not on the committee anymore. And broke those numbers down better as to which it's not all PE kids that end up there. It's ones that are out for an extended period of time. And they were comfortable. I think it's fair to say that, and probably the notes from the committee meetings would verify that. So, if you would like us to study it again and form a new subcommittee, I don't know what to say.
It looks like, to me, for the end full year, it looks like a real spike of activity of PE exemptions in the room, looking at, seeing the full year report. So, yes, I guess I am asking, do we look at this again? And I guess, what is our philosophy about PE? Because knowing the other needs in the middle school for counselor support and resources of staff is having someone monitored because they can't sit in a PE class, the few kids. Is that the best use of our resources?
Well, one of the things that we talked about when we studied it earlier this year was if we were to remove all kids that are there for PE, we still would need the supervision that we have for the kids that need to be there for other reasons. So, that was a consideration, that it wouldn't be because there are fewer kids in that space. We would still need someone to be there for supervision. But we can look at it again.
Just, I mean, for May and June, you know, there were.
I mean, can I just ask some clarifying questions? So, we can make sure we come back with something that's going to be helpful?
Yeah.
So, do you want us to actually look at anything or just sort of better understand why they're there in the first place? Like, are the numbers actually in question? I mean, it is what it is, right?
Yeah, I'm not questioning the numbers.
Gotcha. So, you're saying more like philosophically, why are they there? I thought we talked about this. It's supposed to be under, we're supposed to be curbing the number of kids in the environment.
And, you know, for May and June, there were 10 kids, and seven of them were for PE-only exemption.
But remember that they don't have PE every day, so.
Well, this says PE only. And, you know, sprained ankle, broken leg, ankle injury. Not counting concussions because I see this, I see these transition rooms as a benefit to kids that get concussions. But I honestly, I'm really thinking of, in the interest of the child, make them sit through PE and, you know, make them have to do that for, don't let them off. But I just think it's not the use of what we.
I should have included the information. When we did that study earlier with the other committee, Derek prepared a statement that it, about who would go there out of PE. And it isn't everyone that would be out of PE. It was children that had a serious enough injury or condition that they would be out for a significant period of time. So, it wouldn't be just missing, you know, a week of PE, and therefore, you'd be continuing along with the unit.
Well, yeah, then we should talk about this offline because that's not, that's not how I'm interpreting it on here. So, all right, thank you.
So, you're going to get back to us with some more information. And then, we can talk philosophy. Okay, great. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you for that report. All right, is that it for your superintendent's report?
Yes.
All right, so then, item five is communications. And 5.1, communications received by you, superintendent. And I think you were going to do the town financial policy.
Yes, this came to us from the advisory committee. You'll remember back in June, we had a visit from Dan Coughlin of the advisory committee, and he presented what was then a draft of the financial policy. All of you, most of you, I think, commented on it and had some suggestions. That policy has now been approved by the advisory committee. I did check to see if it was also approved by the selectmen, and it had not been. I don't know whether or not that's part of the process. But in reading through it, it does incorporate some of the thoughts that came up here. It doesn't include everybody's ideas, but I guess that's the way it is with the draft. But as far as we know, this is the town's policy going forward. So, I wanted you to have it and know that it is final. We did call over to town hall to double-check on whether or not the selectmen had voted. And the answer was no, they had not. And they didn't know whether or not there would be an additional vote. But it is a document that has been created and voted by the AdCom. I do believe the AdCom also went to the board of selectmen for input earlier in the process, perhaps even before they came to, they came to us. So, just making you aware of the receipt of that.
Get familiar with that because we'll be meeting and we're getting into budget season. And then, you had another communication, Todd, about your school safety?
Yeah, we talked, you know, last spring about having a possible resolution that would parallel the one that was voted by the school committee from the administrative team. And this is, has the support of the senior leadership team. And that includes the principals, the central office staff, and the directors. They're the people that we shared it with, and we're happy to join in with the thoughts that the school committee expressed in its resolution. And I'm not sure about the student, there was a plan at one point, I think, for students through the student council. You may know more about that.
They did. They did vote on it. I think it was June 1st, and they adopted it, yes. Okay. That is great. Thank you for the leadership, for putting that resolution together. Go ahead, Carlos.
Thank you, Dr. Gallo. Please convey to the administrators our appreciation. It's nice to see that, you know, we are speaking as a body, not just one group. Do you know whether the board of selectmen responded?
They did, and they said they were trying to stay away from resolutions. So, while they appreciated what we were saying, they weren't going to take it up amongst themselves. But we have ours, the leadership has done one, and then the students. So, I was going to ask you, would you get in touch with Pam and ask her about putting them up on the website?
Sure. I'd like to sort of like collectively enjoy press releases at this stage.
Yeah, I think we should. Are you comfortable with that? Yeah, I would think that would be great. Okay, do you mind running with that?
No, I'll go with that.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Carlos. All right, that's great. All right, is that it for your communications? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Dr. Gallo. Moving on to item number six, new business, to hear a presentation from Nezdeck and discuss the organization of the superintendent search. I'm going to let Liza give a little introduction.
Okay, so, since the last time we were on TV with the public, that was our June 18 meeting. We informed everyone that on June 21, the school committee met in open session. And we interviewed two consultants to work with us on the superintendent search. We had received five proposals, and we narrowed it down to two. And during that public meeting, we selected Nezdeck to work with us. And we did issue a press release on July 9, informing the community of this. It was posted on the website, on the Facebook page. It was emailed to a few people. And it was sent to the media. I don't know how good of a pickup it was, but I did see it on the Hingham Journal website. So, Nezdeck is here with us today, Art Betancourt and Carolyn Burke, who you will all get to know and see their smiling faces as the process goes on. And this is our first session to talk about our search specifically. And they're going to walk us through our orientation and take us through a draft calendar. And then, I would, I had sent the committee a memo of a few things we wanted to look at. And Art and Carolyn will take us through everything, but we don't have to decide everything tonight. We will schedule a salary negotiations, subcommittee meeting between now and our August 20 meeting so that salary negotiations can make some recommendations and drafts of next steps of what we can work off of, just to keep the process moving along. So, Art and Carolyn?
Will that be posted for the entire school committee as well as we've been doing, or just salary negotiations?
We have, I was going to just do it for salary negotiations because we have some other business to do, but that we would just draft something and then bring it to the full school committee. We won't make any decisions except that one letter that I asked for comments tonight about. So, Art and Carolyn, I will turn it over to you. And we have a, they have an agenda of their portion of the meeting for us.
Is that in our folders?
Yes, that's, yeah, there we go.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you all. And I want to say right up front that we are delighted to be working with you. We thank you very much for putting your confidence in us, and we're looking forward to doing this search with you and helping you design your search and getting you to the point where you find your new successor superintendent. So, thank you for that. We did pass out a, incidentally, my name is Art Betancourt, for those that may not know me. I'm the executive director of Nezdeck, the New England School Development Council. And this is Carolyn Burke, who is a senior associate with the firm, has actually worked for the firm longer than I have. You all have packets in front of you that look like this, I believe, and we've got some inclusions there for you. We, our purpose this evening is to go through an overview of the search process so that folks understand where various elements of the search fall in in terms of your search calendar. Also, talk to you specifically about things that you have questions about or things that you'd like to delve into more deeply. And actually, it is the first step in terms of getting the search going. This is, this is the initial step where we talk with you. We develop the understandings we need to move forward with the various elements of the search. And then, you'll see things unfold from our office as well as in conversations with you in future meetings. The very first thing I'd like to talk with you about or get clarified is how we will communicate with the school committee. Typically, what we do is we suggest that we would work through a single person who serves as our conduit to the entire school committee. That simplifies the communication, and it ensures that what we convey to the school committee gets through to the school committee from a consistent party. I don't know if you've thought about that and who that might be. Sometimes, it's the chair. Sometimes, it's a liaison that's appointed by the committee. We don't necessarily have to come up with a name this evening, but that's something that we would like you to think about. If there's another way you'd like to deal with it, in other words, if there, you know, if it's a small group that you'd like us to deal with, that's fine as well. But the communication piece is important in terms of our being able to communicate with you clearly and effectively as we go through the process.
So, your best experience is with a single individual?
It usually is a single person with a backup, yeah, is what we would suggest to you. They're not, it's not always done that way, but that's pretty typical.
Well, let's decide now. If I put it off, I would suggest, if I may, that Liza, if she is so willing, be that contact person.
I think that would be, this would be the chair's appointment.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not our choice. The chair would decide who she would like to appoint.
Oh, I have more responsibility.
And you don't have to come up.
We had originally talked about the chair being on the screening, or being kind of heading this up and being on the screening committee. And in that case, it makes, it seems to make more sense that Michelle would do it, but I don't know. I mean, Liza is on salary negotiations, so I could see that, too.
Right.
You don't necessarily.
I know, can we not?
We can clarify the responsibilities.
Could you do that? That would be perfect.
The liaison basically is the person whom we call. They don't have to have the answers, but we'll call and say, you know, we need this information, or we, we're thinking of setting up focus groups like this, and that would be the person that we would work with, along with whomever is appointed within the district to set up the focus groups, that type of thing. So it's somebody to help us facilitate the process, not make substantive decisions about who the next superintendent is going to be, but somebody to help keep the process moving along the timeline. Is that?
And it could be, for example, it could be the Chair and the Vice Chair. I mean, you could do it together in such a way that if we can't get a hold of one, we can get a hold of the other. But typically, it's a way of communicating with the Committee about things that we may need from you, or things that you can anticipate that we're going to be doing in the district, so that we keep you informed, and you in turn can keep the rest of the School Committee informed.
And also call us with questions. It's usually if you have questions, and you know that there's a liaison, you give your question to the liaison, and so that we're not, you know, so that one person sort of houses the knowledge for the group.
Right.
So if you're comfortable, you can do it this evening. If not, that's fine, we can.
I'm, if, I'm sorry, not to belabor it, but if we don't decide this evening, do we just let you know?
Yeah, just call, or you can send me an email, or, yeah, that's fine, if you're comfortable that way.
I mean, I'm leaning towards, I think, myself and Liza, just because my schedule can be a little.
Okay. You might want to talk about it a little bit.
Right, and exactly, who's going to reply.
That's fine, sure.
We'll firm that up.
You're still in the process of selecting the two School Committee members, right?
Yes, yes, we haven't done that yet.
This isn't the screening committee members. This is.
So this would not be part of this?
Just the logistics.
Right, this is just, can we meet next Tuesday to spring in? So this is just really logistics and communications back and forth, just?
So this is not a liaison to the screening?
No, correct, no.
No.
That's a whole nother job. All right, okay.
Okay, that'll be fine. Sure, you can let us know, that's fine. Yeah, that's not a problem at all. Now, the sec, there's another piece of this, which is the second item on the, under the heading of Communication, and that's to, and again, you don't have to do this this evening, but we would suggest that you be thinking about it, and that is the official spokesperson for the School Committee regarding the search. Typically, that falls to the Chair, but not always. Sometimes it's, it's the liaison who takes that on as well. We can be the spokesperson, Nezdeck can be the spokesperson for you, but we think it works better when the School Committee is speaking for itself, with our help, obviously. We can, we can tell you the things that are going on in ways that you, things you might want to communicate with the public, and help you in terms of framing those things. But coming from the School Committee tends to work better than coming from us. So you might want to think about that as well, and get back to this.
Okay, yeah. All right, so we'll put that on the, make those two determinations. Thank you.
All right. Now, the next thing is, is actually getting right into the search itself. On the left-hand side of your packet, there's a, there's a sheet that looks like this, which is a draft timeline, on the left-hand side, multicolored. Okay, is all with me?
Underneath your agenda.
Now, you'll notice that this is in draft form. Up in the right-hand corner, it's a draft as of June 27th, which I created, which Carolyn and I created. We would suggest to you that as we go through the search process, this will remain in, it's not something that we necessarily need you to officially adopt, because dates tend to change. And so that can actually get in the way of some flexibility that we may need. But what this does is it gives you, I think, an idea of the various elements of the search and where they fall in the search, and who's responsible for getting those things done. So if you look at, you look at the very first section, the green section, July 23rd, that's tonight, and there are a number of things here that we're going to discuss, and we will go through those things with you. We also have, as far as we know, the anticipated start date for the new superintendent would be July 1, 2019. Is that consistent with your thinking at the point, at this point, knowing that that can, can be flexible as well? Okay. And then the orange piece here, that the, the part that's noted in orange is something we, we do need to speak with you about tonight. We're in the process of developing outreach materials for the search. In other words, letters of invitation, advertisements, website announcements, and those sorts of things. We, we have developed a draft, and if you look to the first sheet on the right-hand side of your, of your packet, where it says Executive Opportunity, do you see that sheet? Everybody with me? That is a very, very rough draft of a letter of invitation that would be used to get the word out about your search. Now, the reason I say it's a rough draft is because we've taken stuff, actually Carolyn has taken material from your website and other sources, and she's incorporated it into this letter. However, we think you might want to look at the letter and include more information about your school district that would explain to people how you might be unique as a, as a district, the things that are important to you in terms of your priorities as a school district. So we give you this sheet tonight. I can also provide the sheet to you in, to your, whoever the contact person is, in Word. And over the next few days, work on the sheet to make it, work on the, the letter, if you will, to make it your own. You can revise it in any way you like, any way that makes sense. But the, the goal of the letter is to describe your school system in a way that explains who you are, what's important to you, why you think you, you might be unique in some areas, and to some degree, the kinds of people that you, you would hope would be interested in applying for the position. Okay? We'd like to start that process this evening by making you aware of that, and you'll notice that on your, on your calendar, in the orange section, we're suggesting that you would want to have that work done by August 10th. Now, we can, there can be a little slippage there, obviously, but if we could have it in around that period of time, what we will then do is finalize your draft. We, you know, we, we look at it in terms of clarity and things, and understanding the way things roll out. We put it on the letterhead so that you can see what it looks like. And then we send it back to you and say, this is the final product, how does it look to you? That becomes, for example, the hard copy letter that we would send out to applicants throughout the country. We send about 800, actually, a little more than that, 800 hard copy announcements out to, to our national network. Now, this, this document would also serve as a way for us to pull excerpts out of the document, so that we can apply them to website postings, because we have several websites that we go to where we can post the announcement as well. In addition to that, we send out electronic announcements. Actually, we do it in a, in a.
Cyclical.
Cyclical arrangement, usually three electronic announcements go out over a period of time, which would be, again, a condensed version of the, the letter that you folks will ultimately, ultimately give to us. So it's important, not just as a singular document, but it actually is the document from which we derive all of the other announcements about your, your search, including if you wanted to, hard copy announcements in newspapers. And that question may come up, incidentally. Hard copy in newspapers is dwindling in terms of its, its importance in our, our search process. Most of what we do is electronic. However, if you wish, we can do hard copy. There's a, generally a high cost to it, or fairly high cost to it, but it may be something that you want to consider, and we can talk to you more about that. But if you could, as a committee, however you wish to work internally, and also with our help, if you wish, on an ongoing basis via telephone, or however we can help you, if you can work on getting this document completed sometime around August 10th, that would be helpful, then we will be ready to get the word out early in September, and maybe even before that in some cases, to get the word out on the search. Okay? Are there any questions about that? Did you want to?
Yeah, on, on page two, in yellow, it says awards and honors, and that's where, you know, the information that I took off your website, the candidates can also take off your website. But what is it about Hingham that you know, as School Committee members, you know about maybe some of your performing arts awards, or maybe some of that type of thing that, that brings the spirit of the community a little alive in the document? And you don't have to, you know, you don't have to be overly concerned, because, you know, again, a candidate who's interested is going to take a look and then do a lot of research on your community. But you want enough to show how attractive you are as a community, and you want your letter to, to attract candidates.
Now, in addition to this, what we have, once we put the word out, and this is another area that you may want to pay some attention to, we typically provide a link on our website to your website, so that when people are looking at the information that we have about your position on the Nezdeck website, they can click right, right in that, that piece of information and go to your website. So as we get into the search, you may want to think about having an area of your websites that's devoted to, to the Superintendent Search, in terms of providing updates and some of the material that, that we will develop for you over time. You don't have to do that, but, but clearly, that's something that you might want to think about.
And that page was created, and it's now on the right-hand column, on the news column, so it's a standalone page now. And it just had whatever information we already had on the School Committee page, it's made into its own page. Carolyn, on the awards and honors in this letter, how long do you, would you recommend that being, because, you know, is there some magic to this being a two-page letter versus a three-page?
It's a front and back, it's a double-sided. Yeah, no, it's just a two-page document. But there may be information on the front, you know, the mission statement, I put the entire mission statement. You may say, we only want the lead. You may make decisions about what's on the front and say, that's, you know, that's interesting, but that's not what we want.
Okay.
So you can take out things that are there, you don't just add, you can delete.
Okay.
If you need more space, I mean, if you need another half a page, it's not a big deal.
And we can change the font.
We can certainly.
No, I, well, I mean, you know.
I think what's important is that.
What makes sense.
Yeah, two pages is usually what we, up front and the back.
Yep.
But if you needed more space, we could certainly accommodate that, and we could talk with you about that if there were, or if there was an inclusion, for example, if you have a brochure about your district, some districts have, have them, you know, for, to give out to the public. We could also consider that, consider including that in the mailing as well. So we can talk to you about how you'd like it to roll out.
And I think, you know, the paragraph where you talk about, the second paragraph you talk about Hingham would be a good, you know, good way, perhaps to mention that we are AAA in, you know, town, by the three agencies.
See, that's the type.
That's, that's what you know that we don't know.
Credibility-wise, that would help.
Absolutely.
The candidate coming into a town where we are financially stable, so.
Absolutely. And, but what, what is really important, and when we met with you before, we mentioned this, this is your search, and we want it to roll out in a way that you folks are comfortable with, and we want you to be able to describe your system in a way that's comfortable for you, and says the things about your school system and your town that are important for you to have people know. So if you can work on this in the next couple of weeks, and again, you can work with us via telephone or email, whoever we can, we can best, best work with you is fine.
Everyone was assigned, or asked, requested to, to think about this for tonight, so do you mind if we take a few minutes to?
Of course.
I mean, I jotted, I have six things, but if other people, so that we can get a sense of what people want to highlight in the awards, I'll take some notes and.
Well, does it have to be just awards, like, could we just say that we have this astounding number of activities that are available to the kids? I mean, I don't know what the number is, but it's astronomical, this, the number of groups, or, you know, things that kids can participate in.
We can figure out how to word that properly.
Wealth of activities.
Is this, Liza, would be better him offline, because we have until August 10th, send this to them? Why don't we sort of like, start taking time tonight?
Well, this is what I want, this is, what I was thinking, and we can open the salary negotiations subcommittee meeting up to the full committee, but I was hoping that we could get everyone's input tonight, make the list, and then salary negotiations can just condense it into a paragraph and fine-tune it and, and have it completed. Because it does, it takes some time to edit it and make sure, you know, format properly, write a sentence, but, so that's what I was hoping to accomplish, just to stay on the schedule. But, and even if, if others have thought of things, I can, do other people have things? Because I, I'll share also what I have, but.
So I was thinking it would be good to, it sort of says this in here, it says, the high level of community support and input. We have a really active volunteer community in town, and we have very active parent volunteers as well, so I'd love to have that in there.
So what, one of the things I noted was strong community involvement through the Hingham Education Foundation, six PTOs, CPAC, Hingham Sports Partnership, Special Needs Athletic Partnership, music, drama, and sports booster groups, and others, was that, so I was thinking, similar.
Yeah.
That was one of my things. The other things I noted was, we are one of the few high schools in the state to earn both a blue ribbon in 2009 and a green ribbon in 2015. In 2016, Plymouth River and South School were recognized as Massachusetts Commendation Schools. We are a Pace District, one of 12 districts selected by MASs Executive Committee to participate in the first cohort to develop K through 12 computer science curriculum. Our AP scores, 95% earned three or above, and Hingham High School had the second highest percentage of scores, three and above on AP exams in Massachusetts in 2016. And we have 50 years of Metco participation.
Ooh, that's a good one.
So I looked at what we had done for the, the D E S C, you know, tried to get those things in the list. Didn't know how to get the veterans part of it in there, but, so those.
What about the number of kids that go to college, or, and, or other institute?
Post-secondary.
Post-secondary, thank you.
One of the things you might think about, instead of trying to get everything in here, Art mentioned a flyer. We have the flyer that we give out to all new teachers.
Yes.
But each time we've done an administrative search, we've revised it to be, for that particular search. And that has in it, for example, some of the information about the history of the town that you could pull out of here, just to try to be more efficient, so that you could keep this to two pages, and then have that or an adaptation of that.
That'd be great if you have one.
Yeah, so that is something I did share with Art, and we shared it with all the consultants, the Director of Student Services brochure, because that was the most recent that we did. So that's, that is a question for us as a committee to decide, do we want to do the paper brochure and spend the money on it and have a more concise letter? Can definitely do that. Or do we want to try and fit it just into a letter and then provide links to a website?
Do you, do you mind a suggestion?
No, go right ahead.
Put it, can you develop it and put it on your website and have a link and say, you know?
It's another way of doing it.
Yeah.
A, a small sample is as follows in your list, and say, you know, and.
Whatever, either way is, whatever you're comfortable doing is, will work. It's just a matter of how you'd like to roll it out.
Thoughts on a brochure, or do we want to do an electronic link?
I think an electronic link makes more sense.
Electronic, yeah. In, in spirit of saving paper.
Yep. Green, greenness.
Green.
Yeah. Okay.
It's like a Ruben back.
Is it paper or paper?
Green paper.
Okay, okay. All right.
So you have time to work on that.
Okay.
And again, if you.
Any mention of sports? Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Um, we can do a mention of sports.
Yes, I was thinking about that due to when it's somewhere, this, the number of extracurricular activities available to students in the district from his inaction through first and sports, but we can play with that language.
Yeah, we should, okay, we will, yes.
Carrie, can you? Yeah, I have a question on the timeline of this. So salary negotiations is going to come, like, put this together, and we don't meet again until the 20th, how, so, but the due date is the 10th.
Right, so that's, that was, that's part of the dilemma.
Right.
And preliminarily, I've asked salary negotiations of when we can meet, and so I didn't hear back from Michelle yet, so we were. back from Michelle yet, so we were looking at, within that timeframe before August 10th. And I'm going away August 9th to the 19th. So I need to get, personally, I need to get it done before, or by their 10th deadline, too. So that's...
But how are we, as a school committee, going to sign off on it before the 10th, if we're not meeting until the 20th?
We, okay, so that's the dilemma. We can open up the salary negotiation subcommittee meeting to the full school committee if people feel that they would like to do that. Otherwise, there's trying to get as much information tonight from people so that we'd have the information, and then you can trust salary negotiations to write the one paragraph to add in the awards. But if everyone would rather have it as a full committee meeting, we can do that, as long as, but we can, you know, we got to pick a date. So that's where we are.
And you want to get the word out. This needs to go out.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some flexibility. We don't want you to feel that you're in a pinch, but if you can do it as, you know, with some dispatch, that would be good.
Yeah.
I trust the salary negotiations committee to do what you need to do as efficiently as possible. And I will participate any way I can, but you don't, I don't have to be a part of it. I trust you guys to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to be part of it.
So do you want to, then, the salary negotiations subcommittee will pick a date?
Yep.
And then the first part of it, we can open it up to the full school committee, whomever wants to attend, and then you don't have to stay for...
Yeah, we can finish the letter and, yep, that's fine.
So I think what Liza was trying to do by sending it out to everybody beforehand was to say, "Let's get the input now, because we won't have time to meet as a full school committee before..."
Yeah, I wasn't trying to exclude anyone. I was just literally looking at the timeline and trying to figure out if she's...
I misunderstood earlier. You said you were going to put together a draft, and then I just didn't see...
No, there are other, there are other things in here that they need responses to that we were going to make recommendations on.
Okay.
So we have some good, so we've...
No, we definitely have stuff to start with. Yep.
Can I, sorry.
Okay.
Does anyone in our audience have anything that they are thinking of that we are missing that, for highlighting, just really quickly?
Oh, that's a good idea.
No?
Okay. I just made some minor editorial notes, if you want this.
That's great.
Would you hand this down to Liza, please? Thank you.
All right. Are you good?
Okay, so we're good on the letter.
All right. I'll have it by August 10th.
Okay. And please call us if you, if you need help. Call us or send us an email. We're happy to help. Okay.
And the next item on our agenda is needs assessment process.
And that is soliciting information or gathering information from the community. We want to, and you expressed in your meeting with us that it was very important to you to have as much community input into the process as possible, and to provide the community as many avenues as possible to getting you that information. So what, the process is designed to do is to ask the community, "What are you looking for? What do you think Hingham wants and needs in a superintendent?" And then we bring that information to you, the school committee, and you look at the data, and you work with us to develop a profile of what you, as a committee, feel are the strengths you're looking for in a new superintendent. That's called the successful candidate profile. That profile, and I'll go back and talk about how it's developed, but that profile drives the process from then on. That profile is the lens that the community, that the screening committee uses when they sit down to go through resumes, application packets, to decide whom they wish to interview. It's also the process that they use when they're designing their questions, because if the community says they're looking for somebody who can do X, we work with the screening committee to say, "How can you find out if that person can do X? What types of questions can you ask to get at that information?" Or to, and to ensure that the candidate is the best match for Hingham. That process is used throughout the entire screening committee process. It's used, then, by the school committee, as it is your document, when the finalists move up to your level, and you're doing the same things, developing your questions, looking at the candidate as they visit the district, and perhaps you visit theirs, and you're looking through that lens. And sometimes there's four or five people who would make terrific superintendents, and you need to decide who would make the best superintendent for Hingham. And some of them might make great superintendents, you know, for another district. So we're not saying that you're trying to decide who's the best superintendent. You're trying to decide who's the best superintendent for Hingham. To do that, we will, we ask you to consider a number of ways of reaching out to the community. The first is we'll hold focus groups, because some people want to come and talk to us in person, and, you know, you may hear, well, focus groups can be poorly attended. Doesn't matter, as long as the people who wish to do it, to have that opportunity, have that opportunity. And tonight, we'll be talking to you about, thinking about for August, what groups you'd like to have for your focus groups. And generally, it's your administrators, your teachers, parents, of course, students, some communities like students, and then the general community. So we'll be, you'll be thinking about whom you'd like to have in there. And in your packet are suggested, you know, if you go through your packet, there's a list of groups to think about. Of course, there's about 12 groups on the list, and you look at condensing or combining groups. Also, if there are people in the, in the community whom you wish us to call, and you say, "We really think the Chief of Police or this person or that person, we'd like you to contact them directly," we'd be glad to do that. We also will have, we have in your packet a sample of the questions that we put up online. There's an online survey, and this is what we're finding, more people are choosing to go online. This is the, and we'll talk to you about getting the word out, making sure that every parent, every student, every community member at least knows that it's there. And we ask that when you put out your notices about focus groups, you say, "And if it's not possible for you to attend the focus groups, please go online." And the questions in the categories are pretty much set, but what we, what there are, what we ask are questions in the back. And I know, Liza, you've provided them with a draft, and I, or it's, we had them in this packet.
Yes, yes.
And if you say, "You know what? There's another question, you know, I really wish were on here, another open response question that we're really interested in in Hingham," we'll be glad to put that on, you know, even if there were two. And then the responses to that go directly, again, to the school committee. All comments go direct, you know, you get the results of all the surveys. When you get the results, you'll get the results by subgroup, you know, the students, parents, et cetera. You'll get an overview of the results, and you'll get all of the comments. And what we do is we take all of the comments, we read all of the comments and all of the survey results, and all of the results that come in through the interviews and the focus groups. And we take that information, and we, that's how we start to develop and look at what themes are coming up, what are some things that the community is saying as a whole. These three, four things really are what we need to zero in on, strengthen these areas. We expect competency across the board. We expect excellence across the board. But these three or four things, we really feel deserve some real attention. And that's what you, as a school committee, will do, is you'll decide those areas that you feel deserve the attention. So we'll be working with you to set up focus groups, and we do that through whoever the school department assigns as our liaison. So there'll be a liaison from the school committee, and then there's also a liaison within the district. And that's generally someone who can say, "I've looked, I've asked all the principals, and this is a day that you could hold the focus groups that wouldn't interfere with everything else that's going on in the district." It's just the logistics of scheduling the focus groups and scheduling, and generally that falls to someone in the, in the school district. So we'd be looking to you for that information. Okay?
Okay. Now, the other, the other piece of this that, and Carolyn alluded to this, we will go through the input that we get from the survey and the focus groups and the, and the interviews. And we will organize that for you as a school committee. And we, so you will not get all of this information, you know, in every which way. It'll be, it'll be organized in such a way that, that you'll be able to make a sense out of it. And then we will sit down with you as a school committee and say, "Okay, here's what people have told us. Here's, here's what we've heard. What does this mean to you as a school committee?" It's important to go through that process, because the successful candidate profile will be your document, not ours. You will actually sign off on it as a school committee, and therefore it becomes your document. It's your way of expressing, not only to prospective candidates, but also to the community, what it is you're looking for in your next superintendent. The candidate profile becomes useful also as a document to put on your website, because then people can, your community members can refer to it. Prospective candidates can also refer to it, and there is some self-selection involved in terms of, you know, they see an array of characteristics and they measure themselves against that. So we'd suggest to you that the final document, if you wish, might be put on your website as well. Okay?
And we'll use it when we're recruiting, and when candidates express an interest, we'll be able to say, you know, these are some of the sine qua non characteristics you have.
And as Carolyn mentioned, if there are a couple of items, sometimes, usually the survey holds up pretty well for school committees. We don't get many, we do get some, but we don't get many requests to add a question. But if there is something unique to your system, we would suggest that you let us know. We will develop the language around that question and run it back to you so that, so that it meets your needs. We would suggest to you that it be no more than a couple of additional items. When a survey gets too long, particularly with open-ended items, you tend to discourage people from taking the time to, to respond. So we'd suggest to you that there's room probably for, for one or two additional questions, if in fact that's something that you, you feel you want to, want to do. Are there any questions about that whole process?
On the box here, where you say, "The space provided," which is clearly, you know, says just that space, right? Don't write me a letter.
Well, there's space exchanged.
Sometimes they do, though.
Should you sort of like, you know, pinpoint how many words?
You could, if you wish.
So that way, if somebody's typing, they'll be cognizant of that.
Sure.
That you're not expecting the whole page.
That's true, if you'd like us to include that 50 words or less or something like that, if that's what you'd like to do, sure.
Perhaps.
Sure. You can talk about that. We have some time, because you're really not going to be into the folk community needs assessment process until the end of September, early October. So we've got, we've got a lot of time, not a lot of time, but you've got time to, to look at that and make it your own. Are there any other questions at, at this time? Okay. The other item that we would like to talk to you about this evening and actually get you started in the thought process is your preliminary screening committee. We, sometimes, school committees refer to these as search committees, and we would suggest to you that that's not the proper nomenclature for what these, these people do. We're talking about putting together a group of community members and officials of the town that would actually go, or would actually conduct the preliminary screening process for the superintendent of schools. What this means is that we, as, as your firm representing you, would solicit interest in, in the position. We would accumulate the applications and all of the material, all of the, the additional material that comes in with the applications, and we would organize these. We would then take those, those applications, let's say 25 or 30 applications, which represent your applicant pool, and we would then work with your preliminary screening committee to narrow those applications, narrow that applicant pool down to a reasonable number that they would interview and ultimately pass on to you as a school committee for further consideration. So you might start with, say, let's say, 25 applications. The screening committee, working with us, would see all of those, would have access to all of those applications. And we would work with your screening committee to say, "Okay, out of these 30, are there 10, are there eight, are there 12, whatever the number is, that you would like to bring in to personally interview?"
Using the profile.
Using the profile. We then work with the preliminary screening committee to interview, to consider and interview those candidates that they've identified. They get one shot, you get one interview, and it's done in executive session. That's the only part of the process, really, that is, that is appropriate, other than your contract negotiations. It's the only part of the process that's really appropriate for executive session. So we would work with your screening committee to take the applicant pool, narrow it down, interview, and ultimately help the screening committee take, let's say, the 10 candidates that they've interviewed and reduce that number to, say, four or five that you, as a, that are referred to you or passed on to you for further consideration. Okay? Now, once those applicant, once those applicants have been reviewed by the screening committee, that process closes down. When it comes to the school committee's review of these applicants, it's done in public. Virtually everything is done in public, except the, the contract negotiations. So at the same time, it's important for you to understand that as school committee members, you do have access to all of the applications if you choose to have it. But there is a caveat. You cannot discuss any of those candidates among yourselves. And you can't bring any of those candidates' names up publicly, because once you do, it becomes public. And what we don't want, obviously, is for a candidate to be surprised with his or her name coming out when they weren't expecting it. So we will keep you apprised of that process and keep you within the guidelines. But the fact of the matter is that this, this preliminary screening committee really is your eyes and ears in the first phases of, of looking at these candidates and determining those that they're really serious about having you take a look at. Okay? Now, Carolyn mentioned that screening committees can be made up of various components of your community. There is a sheet in here that goes over some of the, some of the groups that you might want to consider, parents, teachers' group, administrators, community members, and so on. So you can look at that. We have time to put the screening committee together, because the screening committee won't begin its work until actually the first of November. But in the meantime, time passes quickly, particularly in the busy fall when things are up and running. So we'll keep this in front of you and be asking you, you know, the kinds of progress you're making. Screening committees are, we would suggest that a screening committee be 12 members, 10, 11, 12 members? We almost never get that number.
We always suggest it, we always...
It always ends up, it's 15 or 16, which is fine. We would also suggest to you that you consider the way, the manner in which you ultimately choose people for your screening committee. Sometimes choosing the screening committee can almost, can be almost as complex as choosing the superintendent, and sometimes can really present some problems, because you're in a position where, as a school committee, you say, "Yes, we'd love to have you," but you may also be in a position where we say, "Well, no. For this position, we would prefer that we would put someone else in." So we have a suggestion for you. Rather than think about this process as actually choosing the screening committee yourselves, that you go to the constituencies that you want represented on the screening committee, and you ask those constituencies to recommend their choice for participation on the screening committee. So, for example, local officials, selectmen, FINCOM, that sort of thing. Rather than choosing a selectman or choosing a FINCOM member or an advisory, I don't know what you call it in this town, but an advisory, advisory committee member, you go to the selectmen, the selectmen themselves, and let them choose the representation that you're looking for from that particular, that particular constituency. That keeps you out of the, the job, if you will, of saying no. Now, in addition to that, there are people that you can focus upon that you would like to invite. You may all agree for... You may all agree for, and I don't want to necessarily imply that this is the case, but you may all agree that you want the chief of police on the screening committee. You can ask the chief of police, certainly, if that's what you'd like. Oh, chiefs of police are busy people, and it's, I would imagine, would be pretty difficult. But there are those people that you can focus upon that you would like to interview. Now, you don't have to do it the way we're suggesting. There are other ways to do it. You could pull names out of a hat, and we can talk to you about other ways as well. But the way I've described to you tends to be the most trouble-free way, and it also puts, I think, some power in the hands of your community to say, you know, we've got people that we think could do a really good job, and you bring them on board. Now, it may mean that there are people on the screening committee that you wouldn't choose, but that's not really the point. The point is that your community feels involved in the process, and the community feels empowered in some way to help you with that process. Okay?
And it gives you a broader.
It does. It does.
And you're also taking a look at what perspectives you want. So as you're taking a look, what voices need to be represented on the screening committee? Special education, well, students, yes. But do you want somebody from performing arts? So you can't have one person from every category, or you'd have 25 people. So you look at people who might wear more than one hat: a special education teacher or a parent of a special education child, or from your central office, maybe it's your director of special education, that type of thing. And I'm not telling you how to choose, but you want to, when you're taking a look at your groups, you might say, you know, there's a big gap here. We might need to add a person, because we don't have anybody representing X. And that's how you look at it. And so it's difficult. And as I said, sometimes you just go to the head of the teachers' union and say, you know, give us, we want three teachers, or we want X, you know, teachers, and let the teachers decide. Or you might say, but we want to have elementary and secondary represented, or however you want to do it. Okay?
Okay. So, if you look at the yellow line across the middle of your calendar, we are suggesting that the application quote deadline be October 29th, and that we would then, from the period October 29th to October 31st, organize all of your applications and have those available for review by the screening committee. Those applications are not done in hard copy. We have those applications, all of the application material reside in a secure portion of our website, and we give people a password to the website, as well as instructions in terms of how to use it, so that they have, they can have access to those applications. Now, assuming that you agree with October 29th as we continue to talk about this, we're looking at the first meeting of the screening committee to occur on November 1st. Now, you may want to change that to a date that makes more sense in terms of your meeting schedule. You can talk about that and let us know. That first meeting with the screening committee is about two to three hours long, because not only are we going over the applications, we're actually going, we're helping them understand their role and the kinds of tasks that they have to do as they're performing the role. So it's an orientation session as well. We also go over the open meeting law, and we also talk about conflict of interest. And there are sheets in here that I can review quickly with you that go over those things. We then would meet, in that first meeting, which we are assuming will occur sometime around November 1st, we then give the screening committee access to the applications. And we schedule a second meeting over a weekend. In other words, we, I think November 1st is a Thursday, we usually schedule on a Thursday. We give access on that Thursday through the weekend into the following week, and we meet with the screening committee again on November 5th, thereabouts. Which means the screening committee has done all of its homework in those intervening days, and at that meeting on November, the second meeting, which at this point is November 5th, we would take that applicant pool and begin to narrow it down. Once that applicant pool is narrowed down to the eight or 10 or 12 candidates that they're interested in interviewing, we go through an intensive three, maybe four-week period where we're interviewing candidates. So what I'm leading to is, anyone who decides that they want to work on this screening committee, it would be useful for them to understand just how much of a time commitment it is and how difficult the work is. It's hard work, and people have to be willing to commit to that, because as you go through the applications, you want all of the screening committee members to have access to all of the discussion that you have had as a screening committee about the candidates. And if a screening committee member is absent, then you may be talking about a candidate that they've never seen or never even heard of. So it's important for them to understand just how intensive the process is and how, it's a month-long process and perhaps a little more, and they need to be available, perhaps even on weekends, to get the work done.
And I would say, if they, they might choose 10 people to interview. It's between 10 and 12 usually could be. And each of those candidates gets an hour, and there's a 15-minute break. It's hard for people after work to interview three, so sometimes, you know, two candidates. So if you say, then that would be five nights or five separate scheduling of interviews we have to have. And if you look, it's going to occur between the 12th and the 28th. You would say, well, there's more than five days in there. The hardest thing we do is schedule those five days, because somebody says, well, I know I was supposed to be available from the 12th to the 28th, but on the 15th, you know, I have a doctor's appointment, and then on the 21st, you know, my son is getting married. Oh, yeah, somebody else is, well, I know I was supposed to be available, but on the 18th, so it goes around like that, and they're all legitimate. But what happens is, you end up trying to find, you know, some people saying, well, we'll do, we'll try to interview three that night till 10 o'clock. All right, well, we'll try to, can we have somebody come in early on that day? And I'm just trying to say, emphasize in your letter, full disclosure. We value your input. We'll give you time to have input in the focus groups and online surveys, and we'll hear your voice. But this particular work, you have to have the time available.
You have to be there.
You have to be there.
You have to be there. There is a letter, there are model letters in here for you in terms of getting the word out on developing your screening committee. I can provide those for you in Word if you'd like, but anything that's helpful. And you're certainly welcome to draft the letter in a different way if you think there's another way to do it.
And I would add, if you all have, I mean, if all the screening committee has the dates available, then you probably are only going to be out four nights, maybe, they'll probably only be five times. You're not going to be out all of those nights.
Yeah, but you need the flexibility.
You need the flexibility to schedule.
The other thing that we would suggest, and we mentioned this at our first meeting with you, we would suggest that there be two school committee members as members of the screening committee. And those two members would serve as the chair and the vice chair. We'd also suggest to you that there should be someone there, it could be one of the screening committee members themselves, who is able to take minutes, because you're required to have minutes of the meetings. We can give you templates of how the minutes look, you can fill in the various details, but that's another thing to consider as well. And we have time to do this, which is nice. You've got some time to think about this. Did you have a question?
I did, sorry. So I'm sorry. Third person to take minutes or just someone?
Someone to take minutes, yeah.
Someone has to be designated.
And that, yeah, and we will work with you in terms of who's on the screening committee. Sometimes, for example, there's a support person who's used to taking notes, and, you know, it works out easily. But minutes, again, are part of the process. All of your preliminary screening committee meetings are posted meetings. They're posted as a public meeting first. Where you call to order in public, you do your roll call, whatever it is you're going to do, and then you make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of the preliminary screening of applicants. And we will provide the motions for all of that. Okay? Now, assuming that we get through the screening process, which we will with your screening committee, we're looking to have the announcement of the finalists by early December. Now, this could actually work out earlier than this, depending upon how the scheduling works with the screening committee. The problem you have with this period of time, and it happens every year, is obviously you get Thanksgiving, and then you also have Christmas, so you have to sort of work around those. But we're looking at the first week in December to have those names of the finalists presented to the school committee earlier if we can do it. And we'll work with the school committee in terms of setting up the date for that announcement. What we would suggest that the screening committee will do is you'll have a memo, which will be done in advance, which will be for public release. And in that memo will be the names of your four or five finalists listed in alphabetical order with a little nugget of information about them, as well as a resume for each of them, so that when the names are announced, you can give the resume to the press and the public, so that they understand who it is you're inviting, potentially inviting for interviews. Once the candidates are announced, the finalists are announced, then we're working with you, much in the same way we work with the screening committee, to set up the dates, and your calendar will become very busy. And one of the problems you may encounter is that it may be around budget time, too, which is, you'd be juggling some things, and we'll work with you to schedule. But in addition to setting up interviews as a school committee, you will likely want to set up times when these candidates can visit the district, perhaps for a whole day, and then interview with you in the evening. You may want to, although the districts are tending not to do this as much as they used to, but you may want to visit the district or the place of work of each of the finalists, so that you can actually go on-site and talk to people. And then there's the deliberation process, which also occurs in public at the very end, which we can help you with. Again, which takes some time and some energy to put together and have it roll out the way you would like.
Why are districts not going to the candidates' districts?
I've been, a lot of reasons have been expressed to us. One is that all you're going to hear is good stuff. I don't think that's necessarily true. I think that if you plan the people that you want to speak to, you can really gain some insights. The other thing, quite honestly, is time. If you have, for example, four finalists, that's probably four days, four full days, that a visiting committee will have to go into that district and do its work. And people are busy, so it becomes time. What we offer in place of that process is we are calling references, and we're talking to references about these folks and getting information on them. As we do that process, we note references that can offer you, as school committee members, particular kinds of insight that you might want to know. So what we can do, if you prefer, and in fact, we can do this in addition to the site visits if you wish, we can offer you a list of references that we would suggest you call and talk to personally as school committee members to get insight on the candidates. Obviously, it would be one school committee member. You don't want to have six school committee members calling the same person, but you divvy them up, and then you can call directly and get information that way. It's less time-consuming, there's less time in the road. Some of these, I mean, you could be talking to a candidate who lives in Vermont.
Right.
I mean, that's three and a half hours. So, but we can work with that as we get there.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think the references is an important part. The screening committee does not call references. The screening committee's work is confidential. Candidates' names aren't released, and we guarantee that to the candidates. We tell them, this is a confidential process, no one will know if you've been an applicant. And we really go over that with the screening committee, is that you'll lose candidates, you could hurt people professionally, you can hurt the reputation of your town, you know, unless you keep confidence. So what the screening committee is gathering is from the interview and from whatever is available to them in the public forum, you know, Google, whatever. When the candidates come to you, it's your job to do that deep dive and with our support. So that's part of, you know, when Art is saying time is precious, you're doing that, you're interviewing, you're having the people come to the district, you're gathering that feedback and considering it. So there's a lot of work that you go through as a committee in December. And we'll be trying to keep you online, because as Art said, you might have four finalists, and you might say, oh, we're, two are really rising to the surface. They may be rising to the surface with other districts, too, and that's another factor of deciding, you know, how are you going to proceed? So we'll try to keep you on schedule.
We'll keep you apprised of that. And if we go through all of those steps and we follow pretty closely the calendar that we have, you'll be in a position to appoint your, select your new superintendent and enter into negotiations probably in January. It could be sooner, more than likely, January, might be February if you choose to delay it or do some things in between, but you should be in good shape. Which would mean that once you've entered into negotiations with your superintendent and you've come to a successful contract, completion of contract, that person could be available from January, February through June in transition to your new, to his or her new position. He or she could learn about the district, and the district could learn about him or her. So you're in a really good spot, I think, in terms of timing. In your packet, just to alert you to it, there is an explanation of focus groups and how they work, as well as the correspondence that you can use as a template for getting the word out on your focus groups. There's also a sheet here which describes the screening committee and things that you might consider. There's an excerpt from the open meeting law, and there's also an opinion from our attorney on the conflict of interest. Let me just talk about that for a minute. If someone is serving on a screening committee, there can be a conflict of interest which you have to pay some attention to. For example, if you, if a person is on a screening committee and that person holds a job that is, where the person's actually hired by the superintendent, or the salary is determined by the superintendent, that represents a potential conflict of interest, because that person has a relationship with the superintendent which is different from just your ordinary, everyday relationship. So we will talk with your school committee about those people that we think represent a conflict of interest, if there is a potential conflict of interest. If it appears that there may be a conflict of interest, we will ask those people to fill out a conflict of interest form and submit it to your town clerk, and that takes care of it by virtually informing the public that that potential is there. Okay? The other piece of this that you may want to consider, and we can talk more about this, is that frequently, a screening committee is sworn in by your town clerk. And that's not a bad idea in terms of liability and that sort of thing. And the town clerk is also one who makes the screening committee members aware of the open meeting law and conflict of interest as well. So we may want to think about that as well. It's typically done as a group. The town clerk comes into that first meeting, has everyone stand, swears them in, and gives them information, and takes about 15 minutes, 10, 15 minutes. Any questions? We've given you a lot to think about, but it will all come together, one step at a time, very nicely, and you'll be in great shape.
Great. Good. Thank you. Anybody? Oh, sure?
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question, Josh?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi. Joshua Ross. Address, 125 Womack Road. Thank you, guys. That was really informative. I just have a few questions. You had mentioned about the online surveys. Are they anonymous?
Yes.
They are. Is there any sort of indicators of like who's filling out? Like, I have a student.
Community member, teacher, students, and the committee is welcome to add to that list.
But the surveys come to us. So, you know, sometimes teachers say, well, you know, can it be traced back to Mary Jones in grade five over it? No. No, the school committee does not get that information.
I was just curious if you knew sort of the demographic of, say, like, a lot of high school parents are filling out the survey, not so much potential kindergarten. I don't know if it's something that you want to look.
You can differentiate that if the school committee wishes to.
Right.
We don't usually, but we could, usually, secondary or elementary, middle school.
And then typically, what's the participation rate on those online surveys? Do you, like, how many people, say, if you have a pool of, I don't know, 22,000 in Hingham, how many people usually, is it like 10%? 5%?
The largest one that we've had was 450 people.
That's for that one. No, we've had some that's 700, actually.
Oh, 700.
It can vary. I would say somewhere, probably somewhere between 200 and 500. It could be typically.
What was our stacker, was it not like 450?
450.
So that website communication one was 450. I mean, we're up there as an average in our community.
The CS was pretty high, too.
Yeah, so.
Right. And then, I'm sorry, how many focus groups are you looking to do? Just one or multiple focus groups?
We need to do six, but we haven't spoken with the school committee yet. There could be more than six.
Okay.
Which would represent different constituency groups. Parents, teachers, administrators, students.
Right. And if... And those packets you have right there, are those public or are those just for the-
Yeah, no, they were all public.
I just didn't.
I can give you mine if you, if you might have one.
No, no, I was just curious. I don't know if it's like, that is like a digital copy that's going to be available, or?
Yeah, we could. We can probably, I mean, this is still a draft. We can put this on the website as the draft.
Right.
It's not, but then that will be refined as we go along.
Right. And then, so I know this is a lot of information right now, but do you guys have a sense of, sort of, your timelines of putting some of this stuff together, the focus group stuff, the?
So I can answer that, as I was going to respond to the committee, that we're going to, you know, work off of this timeline and the, and refine it. And the two things that I was thinking for salary negotiations, to make a suggestion back to the committee for, if we can fit it in August 20th, is to make some recommendations on the screening committee, and how that would be communicated, potential membership, the selection process that will follow, a schedule of when we would decide that. So that's one thing I thought salary negotiations could at least condense the information and do a draft, that then the full committee can discuss. And then also do a recommendation of the focus group plan, based on what we've heard tonight, what we've already talked about, just to have a draft that we can work off of. So, that would be early August, so that we're looking at, you know, early September. And when I looked at this calendar, I was thinking, maybe our first meeting in September, we have the application for the screening committee, for people that want to participate, so that we can then get that out there, and then by mid-October, we can select the screening committee. And then also by, you know, end of, then by mid-September, to communicate when we're going to have focus groups and how that's going to happen. So this is the first time we're all talking about this, but that's, you know, we're, this is our first meeting, and pedal's on, and we're going, so.
Right.
Does that help you?
Oh, it does. I just want to make sure, as I get questions, and we get questions, that we can relay everything. I'm just curious, what's your thoughts on their suggestion as far as letting groups select their representatives compared to you guys picking? Do you have a thought on that? Or you still want to talk about it?
I think we should still talk about it, but-
I mean, to put you on the spot, I was just-
I like that idea, personally.
I, I, that's a great idea.
I think there are some members of the screening committee that that could be appropriate for, and there are some others that it would be more effective for us to just appoint. And then, I know, I've all, I personally have heard from different constituents who want to be on the screening committee, and I think that's something we all have to talk about, because it may come down to, and Michelle has mentioned this before, of, you know, we may find a parent who has served on the advisory committee, has children in all three schools, or grandchildren, or, you know, that fits different components of all the different representation we want in the screening committee. So that's something I think we all still have to talk about, of how do we maximize representation and make it manageable, and so.
Right. Because it's, yeah, because it's a lot of constituencies to have shown up.
It would be something that, so would the constituents be voted on by the whole committee, or would it just the salary negotiations pick?
I would, I would be the whole committee, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious, that's it?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, you. Thank you.
When you're considering focus group, I mean, you can say, we're going to have one for the community, but we're also going to make an effort to call and say to the selectmen, you know, try to encourage at least one of your members to be at this, you know, a personal invitation. And you might call another group and say, you know, we'd appreciate it if at least one person was at this from representing your group, so that you, you can combine groups that way.
Yeah.
Can I, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, go right ahead.
And I like your suggestion, that whenever we're making the announcement of the survey that you, of the focus group, that you talk about the survey. If you're not able to attend the focus group, respond to the survey. Perhaps a great idea there will be to utilize our public access television to facilitate a PSA.
Yep.
Say exactly that. You know what I mean?
Sure.
So put out there, they usually repeat the, you know, the recording several times. So that would be another way of reaching out to the community.
That's right.
We also suggest, if people feel more comfortable, they can call us. You know, if they have the, they know the survey questions, they can, or email us, and we incorporate that information, too. The other thing that Carolyn mentioned that I think is something really kind of, it appeals to me, and that is to have, if you have officials in town who tend to be busy, like the chief of police or others, we're happy to interview them personally, at a time of their choice, so that we get their input as well, at a time when they can, you know, have a clear head and be thinking about the issues at hand. So, I think you'll find the process pretty thorough.
Yeah, it sounds like plenty of community involvement opportunities, which is exactly what we want, so. But there will be plenty between the screening committee, the focus groups, the surveys, the candidate profile, I mean, it's a lot of community involvement.
I think so. So we're happy to take calls from you in the interim. You can keep us updated in terms of your liaison and your spokesperson for the school committee, and if you have questions, please feel free to call either Carolyn or me, and we're happy to help you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Very thorough. All right. All right, back to new business. 6.2, to review the revised compensation rates for field and building use personnel as recommended for fiscal year 19 and act as appropriate.
Well, you have in the packet, and John can answer questions, an excerpt from the field and building and field rental application that we send out. And so I want to make it clear that we're not doing a major revision of that document, but we are updating the places where personnel stipends, if you will, exist. And so this is just an excerpt, and that is because we've concluded negotiations with all of our support groups. And so sometimes when there's a rental of the, of the field or the building, we need custodial staff often, if not always, and there are times when we need personnel from the cafeteria staff. And because the salaries of those groups have changed due to negotiations, these numbers need to be updated as well. So they're not numbers that you haven't seen, because the school committee did vote on the contracts of all of these groups. But just a reminder, we would like to have the school committee vote on these, because sometimes people will question, well, why did that get changed? And it's one thing to say, well, it's in the contract, they don't often see the contract, but just to be able to say, these were voted on by the school committee, based upon the numbers that, the new numbers that are in the contract. So I did say in the annotated agenda that, you know, we may be coming to you looking at some changes in the rental schedule itself, particularly for category three. And the category three are the more public kinds of groups that might rent, someone doing a dance recital, for example, some, some kind of a private camp or athletic event. But that is not the vote at hand tonight, it's simply on the stipends that go to the bus drivers, custodians, field service. Also in here are the, are the fees that we've talked about that aren't part of a negotiating group, for the light and sound technicians, that we find it increasingly hard to come up with, particularly in that category three group, but those numbers are here. So John can comment further on the numbers themselves, but I just wanted to clarify what this is and what it isn't.
Yeah, and it's just, I mean, it's a 2% increase proposed, rounded up to the nearest quarter, which is reflective of all the negotiations with our contracts. These costs will continue to go up year after year after year, and, you know, we don't keep, if we don't continuously revise, it's like I anticipate we do the same thing next year, just so we keep pace with the overall contracts. So, that's, and it's just the personnel charges, and I think that covered everything else, really.
Thank you both. Does someone want to make a motion to act on the recommended changes to the compensation rates for the field usage?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel compensation rates for field and building usage as recommended for fiscal year 19. Has a 2% rounded up to the nearest quarter.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, and then item 6.3, to consider a fee range for the design of the high school window project, and act as appropriate.
Could I just go back to that last one for one second? So was that effective immediately, July 24th? The motion?
Yes.
It was just voted.
Yeah.
Was it July?
So effectively, yes.
July 23rd.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, good, thank you.
All right, so, so sorry, so 6.3, the fee range for the design of the high school window project. I'm not going to say it.
Tell us, Claire.
The clear story windows. Clear story windows. I figured out how to say it. Clear story windows. So back in April Town meeting, we had, the town actually voted a design fee to design, evaluate design and send out to bid the project for the replacement of the clear story windows at the high school. So the town did vote that $60,000 in an article. So at this point, this vote is before the committee to ask you to establish a design fee for this work of up to $60,000, so I can go out with an RFP, or, excuse me, an RFQ, request for qualifications, so we can actually select a designer. And typically in that document, we tell them, hey, the fee is up to, the committee has set, established a fee of up to $60,000. Doesn't say it will be that, but what it does is it gives you qualified designers that will do the job for the fee, instead of getting ones that come in and, you know, the fee's going to be much higher than what we have established. So that's what, so at this point, we're asking for that vote to establish a design fee for this project in the amount of, of, up to $60,000.
Thank you. Carlos would like to make the motion.
Make a motion to establish a design fee for up to $60,000 for the evaluation, design, and bidding, and project closeout of the clear story window project at the Hingham High School gym.
Great. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. You're all set. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, 6.4, to receive a revised policy section 6.22 cumulative records as recommended by the policy subcommittee, and this is a first reading. And Kay is chair of the policy subcommittee, but she is not here this evening, so I think, I guess all of us who are at the meeting can just give you guys a read-through. But, do I need to read this out loud, or does everyone just read it?
No, you just explain.
Okay. So, we met, and Ed, do you, unless, do you want to?
No, I'll help you.
So I'll take, thank you. And Dr. Jamie, feel free to pipe in, because you were there as well. So, given some changes to, or given some information that we recently received from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on student records, we felt it was necessary to change our section 6.22 with policy manual, because it was conflicting with what DESI was requiring for student records. So, we made a number of changes to the record, or, sorry, the policy 6.22 as it stood. What you see in front of you at item, so item 6.4 is what we came up with for language to change the policy. Some of the bigger changes were, it's, instead of calling 6.22, was called cumulative records, but we're changing that to read student records. And then this first reading is just, really just, the goal was to just make this, our policy conform to what DESI says, what DESI's policy is, and, I think more importantly, and I actually have some recommendations after rereading this again, but I think what we really want to do is just make our policy say, we'll follow DESI's guidelines, because they can change from time to time, and we don't want to have to keep going back and changing this policy if DESI changes. So I think we just want to make this very simple, to say, student records as defined by DESI, and as required by DESI, we'll follow their procedures for them.
Include the actual DESI language in the procedures section, so that people don't have to go looking to find it on the website, on DESI website and so on.
Yes, but that would be in the procedures manual, not the policy. So any questions?
Yeah, on the end of the first paragraph says, these records must be available no later than two days. Is two days or 10 days?
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Explain it. So, that two days was in the original 6.22. And none of us, when we revised 6.22 last year, picked up on the fact that it said two days, when it was really 10, and has been 10. And none of us, that day at the meeting, picked up on that. It was only after this was sent out that someone said, well, where does the two days come from? Well, the two days came from the policy that's been there for some time. So it was never two days, it's always been 10 days, but our policy in error, that none of us picked up, had said two days. It's not, it's 10.
I would just strike the whole sentence.
So actually, that's what I was going to-
Oh, so I, I wanted to respond back to Kay, to let her know, and actually got her before she left, to say, you know, this is wrong. And her, her want was that we keep it in for this reading, so you can all see where it came from, but that we would then, as one of the changes, and there may be others that you would recommend, we would certainly change that to the 10. But she felt it should stay there, we shouldn't change it without a vote, because it had been voted as two days.
Oh, okay.
In error. But that would be something that would change before it comes to you for a vote.
So, I would agree with what you're saying, and actually, that was one of my comments after reading this after the policy meeting, where we talked about this a lot, and then, you know, you get home and you look back the next day, and you're like, oh, why didn't we do this? So I was thinking, actually, I think we could strike that whole, these records are, do, must be available no later than, because I think what we're, what we're really trying to do here is limit this language, from a policy perspective, to just say, our student records policy will mirror what DESI requires. So if they require it in 10 days, then it's 10 days. If it's six days, then we, you know, then it automatically changes.
It is in the DESI-
Yes, it's 10 days.
As 10 days. So if they change it, then we might as well just-
Yeah, but it's not, there's no harm, though, in specifying here, you know, that there is, because sometimes people, they want things right away. Why not tell them that, you know, you do have 10 days to, you know what I mean? Now, obviously, they will argue that, you know, it's 10, you know, calendar business.
As in business days, yeah.
So, that's another, you know.
Or school days.
I think that that's probably a good point, too, because people sometimes confuse the 10 days. So the open, the public records law, which is different from this record, student records, it's also 10 days, but the difference is that that law says that you have to respond to the person within 10 days, to tell them, you know, whether or not you have the records, and when they can expect to receive the record. This one is very clear, that you have to produce it within the 10 days. So, because it can easily be confused with that other law, there is some merit to me in keeping the 10 days here, as opposed to just referring them.
Although it does, I mean, Carlos brings up a good point, because it does beg the question, and DESI isn't clear, how many 10, what days?
Well, 10 days, 10 days.
Look at, see what it says. Because, you know, if you ask for one on December 19th, then it's now the-
Yeah, because I would say, school days.
Oh, let's see what it says.
But DESI says 10.
But, if you're on vacation, then what?
Yeah.
Right.
I was going to say, I think it's good to keep the number in there, because we want it to be-
I was gonna say, I think it's good to keep the number in there, because we want it to be, yes, it could change, but this actually isn't something that changes often. It hasn't changed at least two thousand and five. So it's unlikely that it's just gonna, you know, next year they'll change it, and if they do, we can, we can change it then. The one thing is, if we change it to ten days, I'm gonna suggest that we change the language, it's, to mirror the regulation, which says this should be available as soon as practicable and within ten days to, not like, just to, there is some urgency to this, too.
Yeah, I would agree.
The other thing, too, is in the original policy, there was a sentence, these records must include academic scholastic or any other information concerning each student that are kept or are required to be kept, and that was taken out for some reason?
Well, I think we took it out because we wanted, because that, because it felt like we were defining what a student record was in the policy, and we shouldn't be doing that because DESI defines what the student record was. So we were, so that's why we had changed it to read student records as defined by DESI will be, like, rather, because then it was, because there's some things I think that we would consider a record that they didn't, or more so that they would consider a record that we weren't. So we said, let's just be clear that student record is a defined term by DESI, not our own definition. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing, too, is since we're, the changes were made because it was about student work being a student record. So, parents and students are entitled to copies of student work if it's, if they're identified by names, you know, tests and quizzes and things like that. I know we're not gonna put that here, and you said you were gonna put it in the procedures manual. Will it also be clear in the handbooks that that'll be the case?
Yes. Right now, there is a statement in each of the departmental handbooks or guidelines that each department has, and we are going to create one, since they're all the same, instead of having one for each department. So that can be a part of the high school handbook, because the high school handbook has a section on records. The middle school handbook had already gone to press, and, but it didn't have a statement. The middle school handbook is more designed to talk to students than it is to parents. So we're gonna have to find another way to put it in a broader context. It'll still appear in departmental guidelines, but same version.
Right.
And then we also were planning to put it on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I think it's important to get it out to families just because it has a change from the way things have been done.
Yes, because it is a change, yeah, we agree.
Any other thoughts on that? Alright, so we'll bring it back to policy subcommittee and then bring it back for a second reading with the changes as discussed.
Could, could I make a request that whenever we, if you pass on a policy, yeah, that we get redlined?
Yes.
Versions of these?
It was redlined, it was just that it was hard to read, and Pam took the red line out, so.
Yes, but, yes.
We can do that.
Probably would give you both, one for readability and one for reference.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
And then, alright, so moving on to six point five, to receive a new policy section six point three B, education opportunities for children in foster care as recommended by the policy subcommittee. This is also a first reading, and I might have to pass this one over to you.
Yeah, sure. So the next two policies I'll pre-review both come from revised regulations relative to ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the iteration of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Under it, there are specific protections relative to students who are in foster care, as well as students who have military connection, or parents who are deployed and active military service. So the first policy, educational opportunities for kids in foster care establishes, so historically, just so you know, they weren't sort of not protected prior, they were covered in the McKinne Vento Homeless Education Act as subjectively homeless, right? So all the same protections we afford to kids who are homeless are also being afforded to kids in foster care. Those same protections still exist, but there's actually additional requirements that this policy relative to the procedure outlines more specifically. For example, best interest determination and sort of a meeting that has to recur between all parties, including Department of Children and Families, to make a determination of where the student will enroll and attend school. Because, again, DCF placements are sort of all over the state, and you could be living, it could have been previously residing in Hingham and now living in Worcester. So the question becomes, the best interest of the child needs to be taken into account. As well as transportation and immediate enrollment, so sort of a blanket level of protection to ensure kids are given equal access to educational opportunities. And so that's, and I should mention, both of these came up over the spring when we were preparing for our coordinated program review for educational stability programming, which is for kids who are homeless, kids who are protected under foster care, as well as kids who are military-connected. And these policies, we borrowed and sort of adapted the language from the Mass Association of School Committees, who just two weeks ago released their draft language. So, again, these are subjectively new policies for most school districts across the Commonwealth, particularly as we move to implement the ESSA regulations. And in fact, our first best interest determination meeting is scheduled for August third. So we are off and running with, so again, it's law and absence of policy, so that is the regulation in Massachusetts, so we're proceeding. But we would like to have the policies in place for our handbooks, as well as for our onsite visit with the coordinated program review. So that's children in foster care, and I'll just mention military-connected kids next. What you'll notice is the policy itself, we tried to keep brief and to the point with regulations that then go on to explain and give definitions. So again, essentially what's happening with military-connected families is, it is appropriate for the principal's discretion to approve additional absences or times of the child might be away. It also supports DOD-funded educational opportunities to ensure that there's consistency across both DOD and sort of statewide or local control, or LEA-based educational opportunities.
And things like a child having to move close to graduation, the year before, whatever, different requirements that would come from the former school and the new school, consideration of that.
And I will note that under military-connected, based on a question from Carrie, we did clarify that, so under, in the procedure, although it didn't impact the policy, but in the procedure, it sort of defined school-aged children as enrolled in kindergarten through twelfth grade. And we just made the caveat that that also includes IDEA-eligible kids aged three to twenty-two, regardless of grade enrollment. So this will be protected everyone. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about either.
Yes, in terms of the foster children, how do you receive the communication?
From the Department of Children and Families.
Okay, DCF, I'm sorry.
That's correct, yep. So DCF sends...
So I like that, you know, a person, a person has been designated to deal with the...
Correct, so I am the district's foster care point of contact, and on or about July seventh, we were notified by the Department of Children and Families, again, this all came into effect July one, that we had a best interest determination hearing coming up for a student who is currently residing here but was previously enrolled in another part of the state. And so now that they've moved here to a facility close, that's in Hingham, we have to now have to talk about what's, and to complicate that case, the student's actually eligible under IDEA, so the director of student services is now being involved because it involves change of placement, which under IDEA has specific rules and so. So it'll either be me who participates on behalf of the district, and I'm designated by you as your point of contact, or it'll be the director of student services in my, sort of in absentia of me, if it's an eligible student who requires additional protection under IDEA.
Whereas the military children is handled by the superintendent directly?
The principal.
The principal.
Correct, yep. Relative to things like graduation requirements and additional absences, et cetera, yep.
Thank you.
So like, about how many students does this affect?
Which?
Both.
Very few.
Yeah.
Well, kids in foster care, it's six or seven, any given year, and that can fluctuate depending on time of year and sort of census in the, in the, in the facilities we have local to us. And military-connected, we have one family.
Okay.
Activated one.
And those children are identified, really self-identified in that when we enter new children, there is a field that asks whether or not it's a military family, so we have that data through the enrollment process.
So, whoever's taking notes for Kay, we actually have to say, on the six point three B, where it says, Hingham Public Schools has designated the assistant superintendent of schools as the district's foster care, we have to insert point of contact.
It would also be six point three C. That's the policy A for procedures. All of our procedures have an A or a B or a C, so it's a little complicated. The numbering would be different from six point three C.
And then on the policies, the legal references need to be noted.
Yes, we'll pull them up with the procedure into the...
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions on those two items, actually? Alright, so we'll bring those back to the policy subcommittee for, and bring them back to the full committee for a second reading. And that covers agenda item six point five and six point six.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Just combined, sorry.
Alright, two for one, alright. Alright, item six point seven, to discuss parameters to guide the development of a calendar of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school committee meeting dates for presentation at the August twentieth meeting. So, to clarify that, we will try to, we will set the school year, school committee calendar at our August meeting. But we wanted to just discuss some parameters around developing that calendar before we come back in August. Because as I think we all heard tonight, we're gonna be seeing a lot of each other in the next nine months, twelve months, between the superintendent search and the budget. It's a lot of meetings. And, so anyway, I will, I will let others speak. I just, I had some thoughts about setting a calendar for the next year, and just was curious other people's thoughts. Monday nights still work, timing, time, do we wanna meet a little earlier? Do we, is Monday still the best day? Frequency of the meeting, so people's thoughts on, on that, unless you wanna hear my thoughts first.
Monday, Monday being the first day of the week, I thought that perhaps, you know, the second day would be better, Tuesday. And if we could be, try to be uniformly, that we would meet on the first and third Tuesday, unless there is a holiday or something that, you know, throws off, then we can maybe change it to, either back to a Monday or Wednesday for that particular day. But I think if we could move to Tuesday, would be much better, in my opinion.
I like keeping it a Monday, just because there are other groups that have meetings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, you know, so it's...
Select one in advisory in particular.
Right.
Hard to get a parking spot.
And be on the TV.
Yeah, on TV, too, yep.
I personally would, would ask to avoid Tuesdays.
To switch to Tuesday?
No.
No, okay, so sorry, so stay with Mondays? You would, okay.
Yes, I would, I selfishly would, would, would stay with Mondays.
Okay, no, that's, I just wanted to get some thoughts about as we all figure out schedules and commitments, and we have new people and new roles, so just wanted to think about that. How about start time? Do people, and Dot and I had spoken about this a little bit, that sometimes in the past, most of the town meetings, I think, start at seven. I think it was just personal preference that this committee chose seven thirty because family commitments were commitments and whatnot. So just to think about, is seven thirty still the right time, or would people prefer to start a little earlier at seven? Maybe get out of here a little bit earlier at seven, or is that too tough with dinner, homework, jobs taken care of?
Seven would be fine with me. As long as you promise that we'll be out of here by ten.
Up to you, folks.
No, yeah, that would be, that would be the goal. And then, alright, and then the only other thought was the frequency of meetings. So, I personally, and the reason I thought of it was because in the summer, we only have two meetings. So having this, having had our last meeting a month ago, it sort of dawned on me about a week ago, I was like, wow, I feel like I got so much more accomplished for the school committee, having this longer break, because it sometimes feels like you leave a meeting, you have a bunch of things you need to catch up, you know, to follow up on, and then next thing you know, you're prepping for the next meeting. And you're like, oh my gosh, I didn't finish the first two things, and now I have to already prep for the next meeting, so. And then also, combined with the fact that I think we are going to have more full school committee meetings as part of the salary negotiations subcommittee for the superintendent search, do we wanna think about not doing meetings every other Monday? Do we wanna think about the first and third, you know, maybe it's once every three weeks, or maybe it's the first Monday and the third Monday, and sometimes that gives you a three-week break in between. So, I think when Dr. Gallo and I spoke about it, she liked the idea, but I think there was some history to it.
I certainly liked the idea of fewer meetings, especially after we heard tonight, you know, there'll be many more times that you will need to get together as a school committee that probably can't all be on a school committee meeting, and so, the number, you know, the reducing...
Then during budget season, we are meeting a lot more, too, so.
Yes, because budget season, we usually have two meetings, Mondays and Thursdays. So, I guess the big question, I guess, will be is, and it's sometimes hard to figure out, because we don't wanna move to every third, we don't wanna have one every third week or something if we're gonna be here till midnight. You know what I mean? I'd rather, like, alright, fine, well, I'd rather be here for three hours every other week than be here for six hours, you know, two times a month or every third week. So, just to think about, and maybe, let me set the calendar, now that we have the NASDAQ timing, maybe, maybe there's some months we meet two or three times in the month, and then maybe there's some month that we don't meet as frequently as a school committee. I worry a little bit about that from a, and you had mentioned this, as a, from a perception standpoint with the community, that, no, the school committee meetings are every other Monday, and that's what I'm used to. So I wanna be mindful of the community, but also mindful of everyone in this room's time.
Because while the meetings may actually occur every two weeks, we don't really have two weeks in between. Because we sit down to talk about the agenda on Tuesday or Wednesday, so particularly in terms of very basic things like getting the minutes. Now, we've gotten somewhat behind on minutes, but just the iteration of, the minutes have to go from, from Jamie to Pam, and then to Kay, and then back to all of you. So something as basic as the minutes, it really isn't a two-week period that we have. It's a week and a half.
I think if we, now that we see the superintendent search timeline, and I think if we can look at, especially for the fall and then to, like, to February, of what kind of business do we need to get done? And if we can consolidate the business in, so that we take into account all the superintendent work as well as the school department needs, and that we balance it into a reasonable schedule. Whereas, you know, before, we were only looking at the school department needs. But if we could even maybe shift some program reports to the spring, that, or have two school council reports on one night instead of, you know, parsing them out.
We could do that.
Then that way, we can fit in all the superintendent work. That, that's where I'm coming from, is not, we're trying to have the same number of meetings and do more work that we have to do, as opposed to adding more meetings to accomplish what we have to get done, if you follow.
And that gonna stop us from having a, calling a special meeting to vote on items that, you know, need a vote, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you join, you know, Dr. Gallo, they need something voted by the school committee, you know, in order to, you know, apply for a grant or sign a check or whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we did that sometimes with the budget working sessions, we posted them as a regular meeting, so.
Ed, your, your concerns?
It's hard to add in a, you know, a special necessary. You know, you could always make a schedule that's too many dates and then take some back.
Right, just have them on the calendar.
I think, I think that would be, I think that would be more advisable than saying, having a thin schedule and trying to add things in. Because people, you get your schedule for the year, and you work around it.
Right. Do you think you could put together, sorry?
Maybe a couple, more than one?
Yeah, like, how many, like, are there program reviews we could do in the spring or some of the fall?
Well, we typically don't do program reviews unless there's one that's left over in the fall because of the school council reports. The school council reports are brief, so I like lies... The school council reports are brief, so I like Liza's suggestion, we could do two of them in, in, in a meeting, and therefore only need three meetings, that, that's a piece of the agenda, rather than, you know, six.
All right. Well, maybe you and I can sit down and sort of go through what we have to cover in a school calendar year at meetings, and then sort of figure out which ones could be due, you know, an elementary in the middle together, and then come back with everyone with a sort of general plan.
Another place we can save, and I say this somewhat facetiously, but really from a practical perspective, we spent, I think, time on three different meetings last year on the superintendent's evaluation. Not sure that that's a good use of time. It's something we have to do, but we don't need to spend three meetings on it.
Right.
So, that kind of thing, we might deal with.
So, that's into one meeting. Okay, all right, all right.
What was the decision on the seven versus seven thirty?
It was seven.
I think we're gonna.
Seven.
It was the preference I got from the notes.
You're good with them? Yeah. I don't, I mean, how many?
Seven.
Does that work for you guys?
Thank you.
Is that better for you folks? Yes, okay, all right. All right, perfect, all right.
So, Carlos, is this, those Mondays become, particularly when we go to like ten thirty, eleven, it just, to your point, it starts the week off, and it's like, there goes the week.
Yes, oh yeah, no, absolutely.
No, seven would be wonderful.
We shall endeavor to have a, an end time to our meetings. We can do it. Look, it's only been nine fifteen already, we're cruising right through here. All right, so that was six point seven. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your suggestions and thoughts on that. That is really helpful. So, item six point eight, to consider the homeschool application of Elizabeth Green, grade six, for 2018, 2019 school year.
And just for the folks who are new, all homeschooling plans need to be approved by the school committee, and so this is the first of what will probably be. Usually, we have a total of fifteen or sixteen children, but fewer families than that, so this is a repeat one. I would recommend it, and hope that you will approve it. We then notify the parent, and we also notify parents that they, if they will make any change during the year, that they should not make the change until the school committee has voted the, the plan.
I just ask a question, like, do you get any kind of a, a plan from the home teacher? Like, do you know what, how they're going to go about homeschooling?
Now, usually, and this may not have occurred here, usually Pam will put the actual plan in the folder.
Is it in the folder?
So that you could take a look at it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Pretty detailed.
No, in this.
This is actually a really good one.
So that you can see it if you need to. Because some of them are quite, quite thick.
Okay.
So, women, that would be the process.
I'm curious, but I mean, I don't feel like I need to see it, so long as it's been vetted by somebody who knows what they're looking at.
But it should be available for your review.
Okay.
Usually it would be.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the homeschool application of Elizabeth Breen, grade six, for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Second.
You have the cover sheet with the basics, but often they will include a list of the texts, and samples of work, and all kinds of things, and that's what would be in the red folder. So you just have the basic elements.
No, I'm seeing it right now, Dot.
Yeah, it is in our folder.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
I told, I'm.
This is, yeah.
No, the, the detail.
The detail. It was in the package.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was past the letter.
It's very good. So, thank you, family, for providing good information.
Wow. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, approved. Okay, great. Item six point nine, to receive notification of appointments of new teachers. There's a lot of, that's our, that's good. We have a lot to, we have a lot to think so.
We've interviewed and actually offered the jobs to more people, more, fewer, maybe twenty-two, but until we get back the signed agreement, they have ten days to sign it, we wouldn't put it in this form. So, that's why there are fewer than we really have already secured.
Thank you. I will just, as a community, to welcome them, I'll just quickly read the names. So we are welcoming to the district Kathleen Dollar, English at Hingham High School, Melissa Hamrock at Plymouth River School, Beth Howard, Science at Hingham High, Jessica Sinaman at Foster Elementary, Robert Chews, Mathematics at Hingham Middle School, Rebecca Lewis, Science at Hingham High School, Rebecca Wyble, Special Ed at Hingham High School, and Jacqueline McAllister at Plymouth River School, all effective at the end of August. So, that's great. Welcome to Hingham Public Schools. Item six point one zero, to receive notification of a few resignations. Steve Centurino, School Psychologist at Hingham High School, Michelle Greco, Social Studies Teacher at Hingham High, Lori Lacks, Teacher at Foster, and Teresa Lux, Parent Educator at Foster School, all effective as of June thirtieth. So, thank you all for your years in the district, and for all your hard work over the years. Item seven, other items, this may not be reasonably known, forty-eight hours. Anyone? All right. Subcommittee and project reports. We'll go with Carlos with long-range planning.
Dr. Gallo, also, long-range planning, was supposed to meet tonight, we decided to reschedule. You know, I talked to John, and we have time to discuss what's coming up, so we'll be picking another day.
Okay.
In terms of, Dr. Gallo, you, you didn't talk about the foundation budget reveal increase. Do you want to talk about it?
Yes, so, the increase for just the foundation budget, and that's not all state aid that comes into town, that comes from charities, was up by four point eight percent. It's roughly three hundred fifty thousand dollars more will be coming in. Now, what I always used to be reminded by our town administrator was, well, that's only one piece of, of the pie, because when all of the revenues and assessments come in, the important thing is that they all are up, and often there are things like assessments that, that we might not know about here, but that become part of the town's allocation from the state. But we're happy that we're up four point eight percent, and that the average of all the cities and towns for the foundation budget itself was three point one percent. So, you know, a lot of work by our legislators, a lot of lobbying on the part of school committee members, and many other folks as well, and so that's a good, a good result. Things like MEKO funding is up statewide. We don't know all the details yet of exactly how much we will, we will get. A lot of these things have still to be worked out, and so we, we don't have all the details. But circuit breaker is up over what we thought it would be. MEKO is up over what we thought it would be. Foundation budget is up over what we thought it would be. So, sounds like all good news, and as soon as we have the governor's signature, that's what happened today.
How much of it does the school department get directly versus it going to the town?
The only thing that would come directly would be things like the.
Circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker, because that comes directly to us. The MEKO obviously would come as, that's a grant, we write for a grant. So the fact that the total amount is up means that we'll get, we'll get more that we can write for, but we don't have to write a grant.
Because the rest of it, the way our town works, it's going to go into the town coffers, like, we're not getting another three hundred grand to go do it. But, it helps for the following year, and it'll help for the overall budget, because then it'll cover other things that, you know, in the long run, hopefully it helps. Yes, it's good for all of us, so, yeah, this is something that benefits everyone, it's not just the school department.
Doctor, did I see something in the Globe that had to do with a line item on the governor's budget in terms of an increase in, in funding for school safety?
Oh, yeah, the grants, for the surplus money.
Yes, this, yeah.
Good, thank you for raising that.
We don't have all the details about what you have to do to write for the grant, but there is additional money that's been appropriated statewide for that purpose, so.
Significant money?
I mean. Guess you'd find a significant.
Yeah, right.
Across two underplus communities, I mean.
Well, again, you know, anything is more than was there, but whether it is all going to end up going to communities that are larger than ours, for example, or that have different socioeconomic characteristics, we don't know as much about that as we need to.
And there also were grants potentially for social, emotional, learning-type grants. So, you just, you haven't heard anything of how that's going to go yet?
We actually just got today, the big state grants, our allocations, that, that are really federal monies, but allocated by the state. So, on Title I, for example, Title I is up again this year. On the other hand, IDEA, which we count on a lot, is down some from last year. Now, in fact, it will cover the offsets that we have in the budget that are attributed to IDEA, but there would not be additional monies, which we've always been able to have for some unforeseen kinds of things that happen. But those, and there are several other grants, smaller grants, that Jamie is responsible for.
We get about two hundred and seventy and change for Title I, which is a slight reduction over last year. Remember, we talked about how our percent went up, and that's why the increase went up. We are also covered under, under the held commerce provision, so that says year to year, it can't decrease over a certain percent, right? So we still went down, but we're still in the neighborhood of two hundred and seventy thousand for Title I. Roughly seventy and change for Title II-A, which is Teacher Quality Professional Development, and that actually is the grant we use to fund the, the majority of our professional development programming for our teachers, and hire the speakers and consultants, et cetera. And then we received roughly twenty thousand in Safe and, not Safe and Support Schools, in Title IV-A, which gets at educational opportunities for kids in terms of social, emotional wellness and technology. So last year, we used those funds to purchase computer science materials for our rollout for our elementary CS program, and this year, we're rolling it, we're, we're using those funds to support our purchase and rollout of the HTSS Tier One program from K to six. So, we allocated some funds in the budget. We're going to supplement with the amount of money we received, the roughly thirty thousand, that we got sort of three proposals of sort of how to roll the program out. Sort of this is sort of what you can do for this much money, here's sort of our silver package, and here's our gold package. So with the additional funding, we're going to be getting more resources and, and materials for our students through that grant program. So that doesn't hit, won't have a budget impact as much as we had thought it would be initially.
And all of those are called entitlement grants, which means there's a specific amount of money allocated for our town, and we have to write a grant to get it, but it's allocated. Whereas the kind of grant that Dr. Ed was talking about is an amount of money that is available through grants, but we have to apply, and there's not a specific allocation that's set aside for Hingham or any other city or town.
And so Liza's point, we actually applied last year for the Safe and Support Schools Grant, which is a competitive grant, rather than the allocated amount, and we didn't get it. But we'll, we'll apply again if it's.
Yeah, there's a new, so the, the money from the surplus, the surplus money from the fiscal eighteen budget, that Governor Baker announced his recommendation on how to allocate it, had money for school security, safety and security, and there was money for social, emotional, related counselors that was going to be implemented through DESE.
Oh, well, there you go. So we'll find out.
Right, so we have to wait for that. And, and, and it was, what I read was, it could, money that could be used over a three-year period of time.
Yeah, they talked about this at the.
So, but of stuff I've seen, there's been no details yet.
It has not made its way to grant applications, but not by the state yet. Yeah, but.
But it's something to keep on our, yeah, radar.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just on long-range planning, just so you know, Mary Power for the Board of Selectmen is coming to our next meeting to give us a presentation on the town's long-range planning budget that they put together.
That's actually something she put together last, the end of last spring, and I think I do have the PowerPoint, but she said she would be coming in, so it's not a big secret or a new thing. I think the thing that we all will be looking at with interest will be on the library grants. So the library received nine million dollars and a possibility of three hundred thousand more toward the project that they would like to do, renovation project at the library. We don't, I didn't see anywhere in the article about it, the total amount of the anticipated project that would make a difference, but that money has to be raised in a six-month period, I think. And I did look at the agenda for tomorrow evening to see if that might be on it. I didn't see it.
It wasn't.
On there. But it seemed there needs to be some pretty quick discussion about that.
Can I ask a question on the, on the library grant? I know it's off on a ten. We were, we were talking about this, several of us, and what it said was matching. They've, they've allocated nine million and change with matching. Does that mean the town has?
Well, that's what we don't know. I haven't seen what the town's obligation really, really is, and what is matching, because there's another amount of over three hundred thousand that would come if they can be, if the eventual project can be designed and implemented in a way that's lead silver, which is taking advantage of the environmental kinds of things.
Do we, have we heard anything about the cross the school from the MSBA?
We haven't heard anything.
No, you won't until the fall, right?
Yeah, we, we anticipate that it would be voted at earliest at the November board meeting, and those board meetings are usually at the fourth Tuesday in a month. And so last year, we heard the first week or so in December. So that's, was the timeline they always told us about. I think there was always the hope that something might happen, that we make more funds available earlier than that, and that we might be considered for that, but that was a, a hope and a wish, not anything that had been promised or even suggested to us by MSBA.
All right, Policy Subcommittee, we had our first readings, we had a lot to discuss at our last meeting. Kay is not here for community outreach, but I don't think there's anything new.
Okay.
We just set a date for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, okay. Special Ed Subcommittee, that's on me, I have to set a date for the next meeting. I was trying to piggyback off of the next CPAC meeting, so I have to reach out to Tim Dempsey and see what the schedule is that they finalize for the summer. I think there's going to be one in August, so we'll try to meet in August, Special Ed Subcommittee. And salary negotiations, anything else other than?
I'll let everybody know as soon as we schedule a date.
Yeah.
So the thing, the, the three Superintendent Search issues that Subcommittee would look at is finalizing the letter, and the awards and honors, and then putting together a recommendation for the focus group plan, and the screening committee, kind of the schedule, and, but those two would be just to get something to start to talk about, not to make any, no decisions made, just have a draft of something to work from. And then we have some other, just follow-up things on, to discuss about laws that were passed on, and Supreme Court decisions made on unions, and the minimum wage laws that were passed, and just to get a handle on how that impacts us.
Okay, great, thank you. Any liaison reports? Kind of quiet in the summer, so that's good stuff. All right. Thank you, Lyndon Pons, for our lovely water, koozies in the water tonight. Treat to get some water here. Anything else, or I'll make, I'll accept a motion to adjourn?
One question.
Oh, sorry.
When are we going to hear the NIESC report? Originally, I just.
At the twenty, the meeting of the twenty-third.
The next August meeting.
August, okay.
August twenty, yes, it was moved to the August twentieth meeting. That will be a pretty busy meeting, I think. We have a lot to do, I think, at that meeting.
Want to meet at six twenty?
We've got a number of these policy votes, but hopefully, if we make the editing that we suggested tonight, those should be quick.
Yes, yes. All right, well, if there are no other questions, then I will see if there's some motion to adjourn?
Also move?
Yep. I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.